Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, December 2nd, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and just.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda. We have one change. Item E on the Consent Agenda has been withdrawn. Item E on the Consent Agenda has been withdrawn from this evening's discussion.
I will approve that change.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdabig. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Order of the Agenda with the amendment of removing item E, the purchase agreement for 906 19th Avenue North, from the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Item C is the approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2019. The minutes have been posted online and they had been distributed.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig. It's been moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2019, as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, building permits. Permit reports have been distributed to all Commissioners. They are posted online.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdabig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, or building permits, excuse me, as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, you proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is the regular agenda. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Is the consent agenda. Again, it has been amended. Item E has been removed. We have Items A, bills, and the next three are games of chance at various locations within the community.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Been moved and seconded to approve the bill, or the Consent Agenda as distributed with the exception of item E, which has been removed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, regular agenda. Item number one. 5:30 PM on this date, a public hearing and first reading for the rezoning of the Wilds 20th Edition. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just pulling up the web here. This application was received to accommodate the plating of lots within a vacant, currently vacant agriculturally zoned property. The applicant is proposing a mix of R1 and R1 SM lots, which are smaller, single-family residential lots intended for one and two family dwellings, as well as two larger lots proposed for R2, which is a limited multiple dwelling district. It's typically the medium density, up to eight unit structures, nine to 12 unit structures as a conditional use. And also a path lot on the south side, which the city has not received acceptance yet from the West Fargo Park District. This is just a continuation of the Wilds development south of 52nd. Previous developments here have required, included requirements for making connections with Horace to the south. We've made that connection through right-of-way at 9th Street West. We've also had some agreements within, within there that there would be that connection made through Horace. City staff along with the developer and the city of Horace staff have held many discussions to which the City Commission would need to weigh in on further guidance for the city of Horace and the developer. We did receive an email from neighboring Horace residents, or a neighboring Horace resident which is included in your packet. Concerns related to density, traffic, safety, cost of connection to 64th Avenue South, and construction traffic were provided in detail in that letter. We also had a neighboring resident of Horace stop in. His concern related primarily to the truck traffic that comes through Greyhawk Estates subdivision. I think, as we talked about this at Planning Commission, we feel the city engineer can come up with a strategy to reduce that truck traffic during the time of development. At their November 12th, 2019 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to replat subject to the five conditions listed in the staff report, with an additional condition that that solution, as I stated before, is considered and approved by the city engineer to address the neighboring Greyhawk Estates' concerns of heavy construction traffic as the subdivision is developed. What was happening, I think the contractors who were in their building homes couldn't turn around within this area. They were using Greyhawk to turn around, so I think Dustin can come up with a solution to that. We'd make sure that would be taken care of and addressed before our final plat approval. Discussion on requirements of the previous agreements with the developer and discussions of the city of Horace on improvements to the extension of 9th Street West to the existing right-of-way that connects to 64th Avenue South were thought to be a commission item for consideration. I guess myself, Dustin, Tina have talked through this a bit, and our current agreements just speak to having a gravel surface either provided or the developer worked with the city of Horace to do that. We can't build a road in the city of Horace, so we can't really assign taxes to our residents for a road in the city of Horace. Developer is doing what they can to meet with the city of Horace to come up with a solution. As it pertains to this development and the approval of this development, I'm not sure where you want to take it, but we're available for any questions, and I expect more discussion to be occurring as this continues to progress.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Any questions for Mr. Solberg? All right, hearing none. We'll close this portion of the regular agenda and move into the public hearing and first reading of the rezoning of the Wilds 20th Edition. Is there anyone for the public that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? The rezoning of the Wilds 20th Edition? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing no one. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Solberg? Any questions again for Mr. Solberg? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, I just have one just for clarification. 9th Street West will end right at the southern end of this replat, right? That's where it ends, because going south from there will be Horace, right?
Yeah, it's Horace south of there, however, it is platted right-of-way. So there is 150, excuse me, 120 feet of platted right-of-way there. That's more than we would need for a collector roadway. It provides enough for the city of Horace to build a collector roadway, however, it's currently a field that's not been improved.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdabig. Been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning of the Wilds 20th Edition, and this is the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number two is the 5:30 public hearing and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes to Section 4-400. Mr. Solberg?
Thank you again, Your Honor. It doesn't sound like it.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you.
I speak as loud as I can. Let's see if we can get it going here. I hope it does pick up, but it doesn't sound like it. I have no button to turn it on or off, so hopefully Brandon hears me in the back and will fix that. Your Honor, you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
So what we're-
Speak as loud as you can, please, too.
The proposal tonight is to create two new zoning districts. We currently have in place a Cheyenne overlay and a Main Avenue overlay, so one district that we're proposing to create this evening through the first reading, of course. This is the final time you'll hear this, but the first one would replace both the Cheyenne overlay district and the Main Avenue overlay district, and that is proposed to be the downtown mixed-use district. The second one is a mixed-use entertainment district, and that is intended to replace the planned unit development of what we know as Cheyenne 32 with Eagle Run Plaza. Eagle Run Plaza, Sixth and Seventh and Eighth Editions. Those are zoned right now PUD, and so these are proposed to probably in the future replace that. Right now, we're proposing to create the districts. We're not actually proposing that it'll be that area. We'll be coming forward in December through Planning and Zoning Commission with an official zoning map, where we'll have a public hearing at that time, and then we'll come before the City Commission after that with another public hearing. So there will be another, two opportunities for public hearings for these districts to be considered, and I think the mic works now. Right? All right, good. So the first one, the downtown mixed-use district, is really something that came from the downtown framework study. Those two overlay districts I've previously referred to came from the downtown framework study, but since West Fargo's recent comprehensive plan, we haven't made any major edits to that. Design elements that we looked at in the creation of West Fargo 2.0 were used to create this sort of downtown design guideline, and that's what I have on the screen here. And this is the same design book that we've used to design the, what we know as the road diet, and that's the grant award that we received from the Governor's Main Street Urban Grant Program to improve Cheyenne Street through downtown. Much of what is in this district is consistent with what's in this design guideline, which is consistent with both our downtown framework study and West Fargo 2.0, as well as elements from our corridor study from Cheyenne Street. So there's been a tremendous amount of public input that has come forward to help create these districts, and we basically went off of those items. The proposed mixed-use entertainment district is, as I said before, intended to replace what we went through as we looked at Cheyenne 32. It would also include Northern Lights at Cheyenne 32 and the West Fargo Sports Arena, ideally. The district is similar to the downtown mixed-use district in that it seeks to promote mixed uses and higher level design. It's a little different in that it intends to also promote activity in sort of a 24/7 lifestyle. Although, although those activities are both promoted in the intent statement, they're not all addressed within the zoning district. They're really intended so that as you look at your nuisance code and as you look at the liquor ordinance, that you can refer now to these districts. So as you're contemplating changes to liquor code or nuisance code, you can use these zoning districts to establish where that might apply. So zoning's not used specifically to fix everything and create everything. It's sort of a tool, within your toolbox of other ordinances. I think we've heard from the Commission that downtown is going to be a little bit different than Cheyenne 32. Downtown has got to still be a neighborhood, it's still got to be sort of our cultural court. Cheyenne 32 might be more of sort of a higher level of activity going on. We deal with off-premise signage in both districts, and what we're doing there is providing for it as a conditional use. There's a lot of different things we could go into in signage. We could go into the sign code and manipulate that to make it very specific in all different areas. What we did here is create the ability to have off-premise signage. Doesn't mean that it's allowing off-premise signage, it creates that ability to do so. We have some statements within each one of those districts that would treat it differently and would guide both the Planning Commission and City Commission as they would consider those as conditional uses. And again, a conditional use also requires a public hearing, so there would be a public hearing at Planning Commission that we would go through that, and City Commission would have to approve or deny that. And in that, Commissions can add conditions which are deemed appropriate. So for instance, in downtown, it would be likely, looking at the statement of intent of the district, that you would have maybe a smaller sign intensity, or timing would be different than it would be in the entertainment district, which would probably be less concerned with those nuisance factors, except for those that would impact the surrounding environment. Parking and parking lot design also has some specific guidelines intended to create environments that are more pedestrian-friendly and promote the ability to better maneuver within the district rather than park at the front door of each establishment. Both districts were intended to sort of create places where you park somewhere within the area and you maneuver throughout the district. Downtown's are really what we're trying to create here, and places where you may park at Sandy's and walk down to the church or Silver Dollar or somewhere else and not necessarily have to get in your car to stop at each place. We include provisions to require shared parking. We also include design standards with a little diagram there that offers how that could be accomplished. Building construction continues to have a higher standard for design. Increased definition here prohibits residential lap siding and corrugated metals or fiberglass, but it also opens up the ability of the Commissions to consider metal panels. What we have a lot of times is people avoid getting too into design, they just throw the brick on the bottom so that they can meet the requirements of the ordinance. This doesn't limit the metal, it just sort of creates the ability for you all to review it. So it's going to create this sort of, a little bit easier process for architects and builders to get something that they want to get in there that looks nice, but technically before didn't meet the ordinance. We also included language in the downtown district to require a minimum of two stories. That is already in our ordinance today, and we also included language to increase screening of utilities. So downtown was thought Cheyenne Street is more of a thoroughfare, and anything that can be done to provide screening there would be helpful. We did have a public hearing, and we continued it, so there's a public hearing both at October 8th and the November 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Concern from Planning Commission was brought up regarding use. Although use is intentionally minimized in form-based districts, such are as proposed, it was determined that some uses may be appropriate to prohibit within certain districts such as these. So we added in prohibition of what we already define in our ordinance as adult entertainment centers and behavioral health facilities, and we also added a definition for heavy industrial uses to try to make that a little bit more generic so that we aren't getting so specific on listing 100 different uses, but kind of defining that loosely so that you can limit those heavier uses in these districts. These districts are intended to be living and working and playing in, not necessarily be, you know, adding value in primary sectors, so. At their November 12th, 2019 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning ordinance amendments with a 3-2 vote. Concerns noted in that 3-2 vote I thought were worthy of bringing to your attention. Concern that the proposed off-premise sign is intended in the ordinance to provide for just one sign in each district, and that it may cause other property owners in the community to lobby for off-premise signs which would not be favorable. One of the concerns was that we're creating districts that allow that, well, what other people in the community then think? Can they just try to add that district? My answer to that, not necessarily to promote or not promote this district, is that my feeling was that these are very specific districts. The entertainment district is not something easily replicated throughout the community. It could be, and it would be great if it is, but, you know, in today's environment of our community, I don't think we have another area that would really fit the bill of the entertainment district. And also with the downtown district, I don't think that we have another downtown district. Doesn't mean it can't expand, and hopefully it does expand, but it's very clear to me that I can answer that question in a court of law, that these are very specific districts, so if you want to have that elsewhere, it's got to meet the bill of this district. So we felt confident in that. We also had a concern that larger signs possible through the conditional use within the proposed mixed-use entertainment district may be a nuisance to nearby residential areas. On that one, it is a conditional use. We would see it in its scale, and when we go through those, you see exactly what's going to get built, and you'd have the opportunity to either approve or deny that at that time. So those concerns are something that, yeah, valid concerns, and those would be brought up as a sign would be considered. And then we had some concern regarding shared parking requirements in the proposed districts. In what I gave to you this evening, there's some red lettering in those proposed district revisions, and the red lettering is what I changed since the last meeting, and that's, I think I am addressing that concern regarding the shared parking agreements, so. With that, public hearing is scheduled. It is a first reading tonight. I do expect that there may be changes between the first and second reading, and I write down everything you guys say tonight and hope to make good zoning districts here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Any questions, Mr. Solberg? All right, hearing none, we'll close the regular agenda. I invite you folks, there's chairs up front here, so you don't have to stand through the meeting. There's lots of chairs up here. Please come up, front row, both sides. Lots of room for you. Great. All right, again, we're going to close the regular meeting, regular agenda, and move into the first reading, public hearing and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment to the proposed changes to Section 440 as presented by Mr. Solberg. But we are now in the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this issue? Please come forward.
Please state your name and your address.
All right, good evening. I'm Robin Anderson. Address is 108 Francis Street. I'm kind of focused on the downtown mixed-use district tonight. I have some questions on kind of what's in the packet, and also some concerns that I've heard from my neighbors with some of these changes that are being proposed. With the on-street parking, I think with mixed use, that kind of worries people about the parking availability and also increased traffic. I know with the Cheyenne project, you guys are focused on safety, but if this branches out into the other neighborhoods, like has been discussed in previous planning meetings, that's also creating safety issues for our children, for anybody walking. So any increased traffic there could be a liability there from a safety perspective. Says that, Mr. Solberg brought up the minimum requirement for new builds being two stories, wondering if there's a max or if max can be put in. You know, if it does extend out to neighboring residential areas next to houses, I don't think a five-story building or even 10-story or, you know, what have you is going to look great next to a single-family home, or even the multi-family homes that are there right And I believe that is it for me, but I received some emails from my neighbors that are concerned about the safety and the other things that are being, that could potentially be brought in with this, with this mixed-use stuff, with the commercial businesses and additional homes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
My name is Matt Marshall, former Economic Development Director here at the City of West Fargo. I was in town for business today and heard this was coming up. I came to add context in that, this is something we've talked about for a really long time, trying to catch our zoning up with some of the vision that we've had, and realized that you guys don't have a new person yet, and I've been there just from the beginning, so if there are questions, I'm available to kind of give you the background and what we've talked about in the past. So if you're wondering why I'm sitting over there, that's what I'm doing.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Are there any questions, Mr. Marshall? Why are you moving back?
Praying every day.
Thanks for being here, Matt. Again, we're in the public hearing of the zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes to Section 440, or 400, excuse me. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
My name is Iris Gill. I live at 325 West Sixth Avenue. I have a question. Do the liquor licenses, ordinances have a limit on how many bars can be, you know, in a given amount of space, like the seven blocks of, between Main and Seventh Avenue?
No, ma'am, there is not an ordinance with regard to the number of liquor establishments that can be in any section of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name's Dustin Murray. I live at 213 Fifth Avenue West. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight, Commissioners. My main concern with this, after looking at this and receiving a notice from one of my neighbors that I don't even know who they are, which I was very grateful for, is the size of this zoning change. Now you're putting my house in a mixed commercial setting, and why is that? Why is this such a large, encompassing area? Maybe there's a grand scheme here that I'm not seeing, but from me being a homeowner and a contractor myself, what is this? Are you guys, do you have another agenda here, where are you planning on expanding more stuff into my neighborhood where I live and where I've worked so hard on my house for the last 14 and a half years, where I've called, where I've called home? I'm enjoying the changes to Cheyenne Street. You know, lots of things are great. The nights after cruise nights, I don't appreciate the beer bottles in my yard, but you know what? I still like cruise night happening out there, the great event out there, but I don't like the other things that come with it, but just deal with it. Parking is a main concern, and I see many different options in here in this plan, but I know it's, that's all preliminary. But my main question and concern is the size of this. Why are we taking 14 blocks and changing zoning? If there's individual uses for zoning changes, that's fine, but why are we trying to do 14 continuous blocks? Is my main concern, so.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
Mr. Solberg, would you please address that question?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, this is not a zoning map amendment. So we are not proposing to zone any property. I don't know where that came from. These are to create the districts. So what I referred to in the beginning of my presentation is that we would propose to have a zoning map change come before Planning Commission in December, and January likely have another public hearing here for that zoning map ordinance amendment. At that point, I have not seen a map that shows 14 blocks that we would zone, but that's where we would discuss what areas would be zoned this particular district.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Mr. Murray, would you be so kind as to share that information? What's your source of that, please?
I believe it's page 62 on your, on your agenda. Just the zoning district map and changing it. So that's my, you know, why are we, you know, that's my main concern. I understand that you, you know, I mean, change is my, is my business, but-
Mr. Solberg, please.
So the map, there is a focus area of the Cheyenne Street design guidelines. It's not actually the zoning district, so I can talk to you later and clarify that. We'll look at your property and where it-
And the other neighbors, too. I mean, this, you're talking a possible big change for where people live. That's the big thing. So, you know, the changes that have happened already have been existing commercial properties, right? So residential stuff, it's a different animal.
Dustin, I know where you live, but how far off of Cheyenne are you? Are you-
I, four houses off-
So, when you say 14 blocks, we're talking Seventh East down Cheyenne to Main, that's not 14.
Yeah, well, on that map, Morrison to Suckett from Main to Seventh, so.
We'll keep them close by on that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Solberg?
Sorry, Your Honor, I could also offer that when we would propose to do the zoning map change, we can notify those property owners which that would affect. So if they're in a current commercial district or residential district, and it would change drastically, we'd notify them of that change. We notify property owners within 150 feet of the zoning change. With a zoning map, we don't typically do that because there's not a lot of major changes, but we can look at that and make sure to notify them.
Please be aware of their concerns. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Reading of zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes of section four through
I'm Mike Graham. I live at 330 Cheyenne Riverway. I'm a neighbor to the lights at Cheyenne thirty-two, and I think that this ordinance change is great because I believe in everybody, single-family, multi-family, commercial, is all going to be able to use these districts. It's great for the City of West Fargo, you know, to host events. And I just, I think it's a win-win. I don't see any negativity coming out of it as a neighbor.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item number two? The public hearing for the first reading of zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes to section four through four hundred. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Go back to the regular agenda. Again, the information that was provided by Mr. Solberg is regarding the first reading of this zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes to section four through four hundred. Are there any additional comments, questions, Mr. Solberg? Is there anything else you'd like to share with us, Mr. Solberg?
No, I'm open though if they have concerns, questions after the meeting.
Make a motion to put it on first reading. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please? Second, second by Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to put it on first reading. The zoning ordinance amendment for proposed changes to section four through four hundred, the entertainment districts. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'm going to abstain. Mr. President, I don't vote on anything that's related to sign regulations and there are sign changes incorporated within this proposal, so I will abstain on.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will also be abstaining on this vote. Being it is regarding an ordinance, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote with Mr. Thorsted and myself are abstaining, recusing ourselves. Aye.
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 Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Item number three, the lights on Cheyenne thirty-two, an update by Mr. Burning. And Mrs. Olson.
I don't know how to run technology.
I don't know if I do either.
Melissa, would you assist, please, or someone? Thank you.
You running it? Thanks for having us here.
Please introduce yourselves.
Todd Burning with Epic Companies, Mackenzie Olson.
Epic Companies.
Thank you. Just doing our quarterly update. So I was just going to go through a few things and feel free to stop me at any time and then afterwards, if anybody has any questions as well, be really happy to do the best I can. So this is specifically about the parking ramp and the plaza area that we're developing on Thirty-second and Cheyenne. These are current pictures literally twenty-four hours before it snowed, so enjoy them, except for the bottom one. The bottom one is what it was like this summer, but the top left is the parking ramp. Basically, the parking ramp will be complete a week from Friday. We're working with city inspections and stuff to get that finalized. The road to the north is actually open. We forgot to get snow removal on that, but we got that covered now, so that is literally a public road and it's open for business. So everything's coming online. We plan on leaving the top floor and the third floor closed for a while. Let the school district and the arena use the main floor and second floor and also be shared by other people during the day that are working on the project and get as many of those vehicles off the roads as we can and start using that in the interim. So work through that, then if we need to open up more levels, we will. But just take it one step at a time. Invite you to take a look at it. I think people are parking in there, right, Amy? And so we're pretty happy about it. Elevator and everything should be ready to roll, so. Kind of next week. Budget, can you blow us up a little bit? In here, I can see it. We're tracking. We haven't had any surprises since three months ago. As you know, the total budget for both projects together is around fifteen million of usable money against our TIFs and special guaranteed on the TIFs. And we really haven't had any surprises at all. I mean, you win a few, lose a few, but the bottom number is on target and still have a contingency, so we should be just fine. Shouldn't be anything. Obviously, the parking ramp is about done and it's running around twenty thousand dollars a spot, totally finished, so that's a good thing. Time of the parking ramp, we covered that. Just, I put this picture in, or Mackenzie did, on our website, twenty-four seven, I think it's eight o'clock this morning, you can see the progress and it's mounted on top of the ice arena. And we're recording it and so whoever can use it for whatever they want down the road, but it, time lapses and it'll be kind of fun to watch that as things pop up, so. Good, good perspective. Here we're at, just showing a couple more pictures, but the light plaza capabilities, nothing has changed on that. It's, you know, we haven't pulled any amenities. We've actually added a couple amenities because we're winning quite a few battles on our budget. We've added a water feature that's going to be really cool for the little kids. I think we pulled the trigger on that this last week. So everything on the plaza is tracking, which is a big statement. It's been really, really complicated. It integrates with our east building, which will come online February one, which is a significant milestone. As we set this project up three, four years ago, we're trying to create these milestones and when things would happen and we're actually ahead of that with our south building on and Jim Bolis's company tracking. Our milestones are being met, which is a huge impact for the TIF process of it. So anyway, the light, the plaza is definitely have a lot of capabilities for public programming and that's what it's all about, so we're tracking. And again, the budget on this, we're at about six point three million and, you know, so they're both running very, very well. We did get pushed back a little bit on the plaza from a timeline standpoint when all the rain came, but we've got some hard bookings on the twentieth of June and twenty-fifth of June and those things will be announced when West Fargo Events and the crew is ready to do that. You know, so we'd liked it to have been made, but that's okay. We're not under duress, well, we kind of are now, self-imposed duress, so Gird's Construction's got to get it done. But seriously, it's all tracking very, very well. This is the timeline, we update that, and, you know, we got through the hard part. We're ready for flat work and we were blessed with two or three. They weren't exactly balmy weather, but they weren't rain or snow and we made a lot of headway, so that saved us quite a bit of winter money. That's a weird perspective from a drone straight down at it. The, I don't know, to the left, I guess, is the parking ramp, to the top is the east building, to the right is the south building. The south building is, you know, we've, we've got over the hump on that. We got, you got to get that podium of the second floor concrete done, we did, and so up we go. And that'll be a six-story building by the end of December. And of course, the bottom is towards the arena, but it's kind of an interesting perspective. So I just, it's nice not having to come and say, oh, it's going to change. It's not what we want. We're on target with the budget and amenities and interest rates are low for the bonding and so there's just lots of good things. We've, we've got many, many documents that we've been working back and forth between developer, legal, West Fargo Events, city, and we've made a tremendous amount of headway in the last month on that with Tina and Jim and really hasn't been any wrinkle. I mean, we've tweaked some things and adjusted, but it's all just because of we're in the home stretch, I guess would be a fair statement, and Jim's been awesome at putting his arms around that for everybody, really. It's a good thing, keeps us on track. Any questions?
Questions from Mr. Burning? Miss Olson? Thank you for up the, yeah. Is there some marketing being done on the social platforms or whatever, either by Epic or the City of West Fargo with regard to the parking ramp and that the two, first two floors can be used by the West Fargo School District and the hockey arena and all that? Is there, is there some joint effort going on there to communicate to the public?
Yeah, we have been meeting in regards to doing like a ribbon-cutting type ground, you know, open house type thing there, so we'll definitely keep everyone posted on when that date will be.
But just to continue that the public can use that space now and as Mr.
It's not open for the whole public right now. It's open for the West Fargo Sports Arena to coordinate with groups that are coming. So but once we, once we have a full public opening, it's just a little hard to explain only use these two floors, don't go crazy, so we'll keep it on.
The only public thing we have is the arena right now. And so Mike is coordinating that with his events. Now, once, once the lights come on, the east building, February one, that will be coordinated with everybody. There's no question about that because those businesses, I mean, we've got restaurants and lots of different businesses that are going to be coming online sometime in March or so and they're going to need that for their employees and patrons. But Melissa's right, it's, it's really in Mike's comments right now, communicate with the users of the arena.
All right, very good. Thank you for the clarification. Mrs. Fisk.
Yes, I just wanted to add another, this is kind of on what Todd was saying. It's written into our developer agreements that until the certificate of occupancy is received on the first building, we don't take ownership of the parking ramp. So that's kind of what he was alluding to as to why it's not our ramp open to the public yet, because that has to happen, which it will soon, and then we'll take ownership.
Now, February one's kind of a key date.
All right, good. Thank you all. Thank you for joining us. The next order of business is item number four. It's the first reading of ordinance number eleven forty-six, the bench sign franchise. Mr. Shockley. Mr. Shockley's not with us. Please, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. This is the first reading repealing the bench sign ordinance. Currently, there is an agreement for the bench sign franchise ordinance that expires June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. It was a five-year contract and discussion with city staff, they've, we've decided that it's time to repeal that. Based in part on the vision for downtown, the downtown area and what the benches should look like to fit in with the scheme. And the contract ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The, if you look on the last page, this, the effective date of this ordinance would be July first of two thousand and twenty, so it would be after that contract has expired.
I have a question. Has there been dialogue ongoing about this? Any of the other commissioners aware of this? I'm going to recuse myself on this one also because my name's on the contract, but there's been no dialogue with the commissioners. I don't understand this.
It was, this has been ongoing for quite some time and it was probably, and we'd have to go back and re-educate Mike and Mark, but this was probably the prior commission that we've talked about this over and over, that technically, we've had several issues which are whatever, but at the end of the day, we felt that for the beauty of our corridors, that was one thing to create something that was, that would be more aesthetically pleasing. Also, this is on the verge of a violation of off-premise signage in its own right, not that that was the push for it. The push for it was the aesthetics.
What kind of violation?
Making it look nice.
What kind of violation?
I mean, Jim, Tim would have to explain that, but technically, we've got benches out there that the city collects money on and they have advertising for other locations. That's the whole purpose of the bench, the bench ordinance.
I, I, I don't know. I've been here since the beginning and I actually was the one, I believe, who made the motion to support going with the benches, as the mayor said, he was part of that company at the time. But I, we've never had conversations as a commission at all about going away with them. It's just like, sometimes everything we get is brand-new from our staff and I think that's wrong. I think, I think we have to have better dialogue between us and we don't, unfortunately. I think. Mr. Solberg, do you like to?
I was just going to come up and be available for the questions. Refer to the comment Tina made at her Brown Bag seminar, our discussion we had on signage. We talked a little bit about off-premise signage. This was one thing that was highlighted by John as potentially being an issue with allowing off-premise signage in a very specific setting like this. It creates some issue potentially within our sign code. The most recent court opinion read versus City of Gilbert is sort of something that has made us look more scrutiny, added more scrutiny to our sign code, and this is one of those kind of triggers for us that likely would have to be edited out of our sign code, maybe, maybe not. And we're at a timing thing here now, we're, we're at the end of a five-year cycle. We don't want to start another five-year cycle and it, it's sort of a bad thing to start a new five-year cycle if then we remove it in six months to a year.
We have till June, right?
Well, with the notification that's in the contract, I think that's why the timing is what it is and Ms. Ware would probably have to clarify that or maybe John did in an email, I'm not sure, but I think there was a timing thing here with this contract. We didn't want to start a new RFP. We've already gotten called, two calls, right, Larry? Two calls from competing vendors that want this contract. We didn't want to open it up again and have them go through the process of having to put together an RFP if potentially it's going to be taken out.
I can see where that would be a bad thing that we want to make money, I guess, but.
Yeah, it's, apologize that it came to you at this way, it's been something discussed since that Brown Bag and then also previously a little bit when we were talking about aesthetics too, so.
I don't think, I don't think a couple of weeks would hurt. I'd like to motion to table this if I could and get some more. Could I ask one indulgent? Sorry. The general manager of North Dakota for Indigo Sign Works is in the audience, Mr. Matt Brazel. Mr. Brazel, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Were you given notification on this?
I'm not aware of it. Maybe we haven't heard anything publicly or anything about it, or through the, what's the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Just Fisk.
In that, we had even last year sent some correspondence because we had issues with collection of the funds for the franchise fees. We had issues of the benches being placed in places that weren't, that they were not supposed to be. So even as much as a year ago, and I think maybe Larry can remember this, we sent correspondence to them that we were going to be canceling this franchise agreement at some point as soon as it, and I even, we even considered doing it a year or two ago at that time, but we felt we'd just let it run its course. So I'm not sure I can gather the correspondence that we've sent and the emails that I've sent out to them, letters, so far, legal documents that we've sent them and present them to the commission if you'd like.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. I think I'd still like to table this for a couple of weeks. That'd be my motion. Been moved to table this, item number four, ordinance number eleven forty-six regarding the bench sign agreement. Is there a second?
Tableling it for a couple of weeks doesn't cause any issue with whatever the timing question that came up was?
No, we still have time to do the proper notice.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, second by Commissioner Jurdabek to table item number four regarding ordinance number eleven forty-six. Is there any further discussion? Once again, Mr. Thorsted has informed me that he would like to recuse himself of this item and I will be also. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll. Very none, we'll proceed to vote by roll call again, please. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Item number five, the Fall 2019 Code Enforcement Report. Mr. Freeman?
Good evening, Presidents and Commissioners. I have provided you the last of my reports, the Fall 2019 Code Enforcement Report, and I'm here to answer any questions on that. Ready for the questions about where the offices are going?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Freeman? Clarify again where you're going to be officeing, please, for the public's information.
Sure. So I am moving under the Fire Department. I'm currently under Public Works and I'm currently at the Public Works Department or offices. I am being transitioned into the Fire Department and I will actually be housed under the Fargo Fire Department in Fargo, just down 12th Avenue at the Public Safety Building. Public Safety Building also houses the Fargo and Cass County Emergency Managers, so it's a pay for us.
Just wanted the public to be aware that it's going to be offsite from where you have been, Mr. Freeman. Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions, Mr. Freeman?
I just want to comment, it's a very good report.
All done, very much so. Right? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next order of business, our construction updates. The City Engineer, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, President Dardis, members of the commission. Give me a second here, I gotta plug back in. Should be relatively brief tonight as most of the construction activities have subsided, but there were a couple of things I wanted to highlight, starting with our water distribution project, the water main that we are putting in along Ninth Street, as well as the water main we're putting in along 15th Street West. The project is really only about 10, 25% complete. The completion date is in August of next year, but the contractor is trying to make as much progress as they can during the cold temperatures and it's the type of work that we can do up until it really freezes hard and deep. We have a stormwater lift station that is being built south of 52nd Avenue on the west side of the Wilds 11th Edition. That contractor is again still progressing, even though we have the cold weather. Again, it's the type of work in nature that can be worked on during the winter. Couple other quick updates on some of the other, about two other developments, Oakbridge 18th Edition as well as the Wilds 11th Edition. Oakbridge 18th is the project just west of Cashwise. They're about 55, or 50% complete with all of the underground utilities installed. The, the streets will get done next summer and then the Wilds 11th Edition, again, all of the underground have been installed. We, the contractor's still out there a little bit, working on street signage in a couple of areas where they have streets paved. Then the, on the south side of that development, the paving will continue next spring. Some of the other activities, more on the private side, that are, are consuming some of our time and rightfully so. We have a lot of residential construction and commercial construction going on. This is just an example of a residential neighborhood where there's just a lot of activity out here, so we're, we're really trying hard to work with all of the residential contractors, as well as the utility providers, to try to keep these areas clean, follow our stormwater management policies and protocols, buy, buy the permits that we give out. So just, this, this area has been improved greatly since this picture was, or since these pictures were taken. But again, just wanting to make the commission aware that this is certainly a focus.
Excuse me, Mr. Scott. What is the city's recourse for these contractors that are going through the boulevards like that?
So there is a, there's a, a couple recourse actions. The first one being a stormwater permit that contractors are issued to do work. When they are in violation of that stormwater permit, they are given a period of time, usually 24 to 48 hours, to, to restore any disturbed areas or to ensure that all areas are protected in terms of where the water can drain into and, and not getting things environmentally contaminated. There's a, a utility excavation permit or right-of-way permit that, that we issue for work done. If they are in violation of that, there are, call it administrative penalties by ordinance that we can enforce. We can, if, if matters become to the point where corrective action is not being taken, we would certainly bring the issue forward to the commission and place a contractor and entity in not good standing with the city, basically following our, our ordinances that would not allow them to receive any other licensure or permits from the city. So at this point, we haven't gotten to that level. You know, it's just a lot of extra coordination and communication with contractors and, and the utility providers and...
So the issues, and the photographs that you show here, there's been a remediation to that?
To most of it, yes. There are some other things specific to this area that will have to get addressed in the spring once weather cooperates. There's nothing overly alarming to where it can't be corrected. So we, we're going to continue to work with the contractors. Any items that can be restored or fixed today are being done. Things that need to wait until next spring, we are tracking, monitoring, and we'll be enforcing that as soon as we can, as soon as the weather turns.
I'd respectfully request that you email the address of this, this site to all of the commissioners, because I'm going to be on site there tomorrow.
Sure.
Thank you.
Dustin, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. Speaking of that, before we jump the gun too quickly on this, do we have a contract, Dustin, that we signed a contract with the developers now? Okay? That they are responsible for everything under developments such as these pictures you're showing me right now?
A developer is given a stormwater permit for the entire development. So technically underneath that permit, they are required to control and maintain all the activities occurring within it. It does get difficult when, you know, it might be a dry utility has hired a contractor to come in and trench in some conduit, that contractor makes a mess within that developer's site. And unfortunately, yes, the developer is still responsible underneath that permit even though it was...
So then, so in this case exactly, you know where I'm going with this?
Yes.
In this case with this picture in the red-hand corner, that was done by a utility company.
Correct.
You know, they know which one, but, so my question is, is it the developer's responsibility to go after them?
Well...
I mean, where's that fine line, Sarah, where we, you know, who do we go after, who don't we, and who does the developer go after? Because I don't think right now we kind of really know.
Well, we are going after the utility. So if someone has a right-of-way permit, which in this case that utility provider should have a right-of-way permit issued by us, we will go after that utility provider as much as we can. Unfortunately, part of our issue today is that we don't have the time and staff or resources to really administrate the permits that we have issued. Currently, actually, our right-of-way permits are issued out of our Public Works office and are being managed by our utility locator and our Public Works assistant. That is changing, we're going to bring that into the Engineering Department. So at this point, it is the city's responsibility to go after the dry utility provider in this case. We sometimes can't stand, well, we can't stay on top of it 100% of the time because we don't have staff designated to do it.
When you were with Moore, did they have a problem with this too? Did they have enough people on? Is where I'm going with them. Do they have enough, did they have this problem? Or has our service dropped since they've taken them? That's my question here. Do we not have enough people?
Well, the city has always issued right-of-way permits and this particular issue has been around since I've been around. We've dealt with...
The enforcement element of it?
Correct. Yep, the enforcement element of it. Some years are worse than others. It's always the wet years that are predominantly going to be more challenging because it's just, it's difficult to stay up on maintaining a site. So in terms of construction inspection on a city project, yes, more engineering provides enough staff to adequately control that site. When we get into this arena where there's probably 50 building permits issued within a two-block area and all of the dry utilities are being installed and all of these residential permits are, or houses are being built, we issue permits, but there isn't a lot of inspection and management or, or daily oversight of the activities out here. So we may have issued a permit to, for example, a power utility company and a week later they go out here and trench in that conduit. There is, there hasn't been a process to stay up on that they restore the boulevard afterwards. We don't have enough inspectors or staff to stay on top of that.
So is this, is this somewhat a unique, because this is one developer? Is this a unique situation or do we just plain and simple need to hire?
We had, we had the same issue two weeks ago, just west of Costco, Enclave's new site. We had an issue with contractors, the mud was getting tracked over all of the, the two or three streets that are in that neighborhood. Again, we do our best, once we are alerted to the issue, we will do our best to get a hold of the contractor. But again, there isn't, we don't have enough staff that are out monitoring it. So I would say this is not, this is not intended to pick on anybody. This has been a historic problem globally and again, part of the problem is we need to beef up our policies and, and enforce them, which also means we need to beef up some staff, designate staff to go out and, and really...
From a legal standpoint, Sarah, I would think unless we see it, even if we see it, it's very hard to prosecute this. I mean, you can't just say, well, yeah, that was that guy that went through there. I mean, it just seems like we got some work to do here to get this under control.
Right, from a prosecution standpoint, it would be really hard for criminal, for the civil, you know, they're the ones that took out the permit. The damage is consistent with what was authorized by the permit and I think in a lot of circumstances, they're not necessarily denying that they did it. They're, you know, it's wet and it's just a matter of finding it in a timely fashion and having it restored.
So have you, Mr. Scott, or building inspections, have you done any type of evaluation or assessment as to what necessary staffing requirements would, we would need?
It's a great question, Mr. President. The, we, there's been some early thought into it, that step one is that the right-of-way permitting and stormwater management will be pulled into the Engineering Department from Public Works, partly because it, it kind of falls in line with some of the other activities that engineering oversees. So that's kind of step one. Step two, reevaluate our current policies and procedures. And once we've reevaluated some of those, we can really start to decide how much enforcement and manpower will be needed. Although I will say, off the cuff, we know we need at least a, a hire to, someone to be in charge of our stormwater management program. Today, we have a staff member in Public Works that is in charge of a multitude of things and stormwater management is a part of that. So we need to single that out and have a designated person in charge of it. Now, maybe there's an opportunity to, to use some of the resources we'll have within the building inspection area now that that will become a city function, but we may need to hire an inspector specific to this stuff. So I think, you know, we're already taking the right steps forward. We're working, all of us, as department heads and, and staff, we're working towards solving some of these. So again, to answer your question, I think we really need to evaluate our policies and procedures before we can put a final pin on, on what exactly we need from a staffing standpoint. And those policies need to come before the commission so that once those are adopted, then we can come back and say, okay, well, over the next two years, we're going to need to, you know, hire one or two additional staff members.
We look forward to your assessment on that.
Coming shortly. And then, on a similar subject and to conclude my discussion here tonight, we did, for the first time in our, in West Fargo's history, we did put a halt or a stop work on all right-of-way permits. Our other cities around, you know, Fargo, Moorhead, they do this, they have done this. But basically, we're not going to issue permits for any new requests unless they are deemed to be an emergency. Couple of concerns we're addressing here. One, if someone goes and, and does perform work in a boulevard, there's no way to restore that area, it, it's too cold. We don't want to permit things like sidewalk or street removals, it's too cold to reasonably put those things back in place unless they want to go with a thick concrete section and apply to, you know, adhere to all the cold weather concreting procedures and it's just not realistic. So at this point, as of November 27th, on, on November 27th, we sent a letter out to the, all the contractors, basically identifying that December 6th is our stop date for any new permits within the right-of-way. So it's, it's not new to the area, but it's new to West Fargo. And again, i-if there is an emergency, you know, pipeline breaks and they have to go out there and fix it, that's an emergency. Power failure somewhere and Excel needs to come and replay, those are emergencies. Somebody just wants to add a new service line for a shed, you know, and a, that kind of thing, will not be permitted. So, again, those letters went out last week. I haven't heard any feedback from contractors on whether or not they're upset by it, but I imagine, again, it's, it's typical protocol for Fargo and Moorheads, I got to imagine they're just assuming that we're following suit, so. With that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next order of business is item number seven, the City Administrators' Report. Mrs. Fisk?
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. I have a few items here. First of all, I want to give you an update on the third grade tours that were taking place for the last few weeks and we have the last of them this coming week. Melissa and Courtney were the ones that coordinated the schedule with the school district. Of the 14 elementary schools, 12 of them have been through the building and two, the other two are coming this week. I want to extend a thank you to Ellen Malachi, Melissa and Courtney, as they were the ones that conducted a lot of the tours. And also thank you to Assistant Chief Boyer, Lieutenant Gustafson, Sergeant Williams, Officer Danielson for the PD tours, and Kayla, Scott, Tiffany, Linda Edwardson at Public Works. Seems the children truly enjoyed them. They were a little quicker turnaround time this year than last year, but they seem to have a really good time. On the same token as what, I'm going to add a little bit to what Dustin talked about. One of the issues we're also having is that we've lost four light poles up in Brooks Harbor. The contractors are up there and they're knocking down curbs. One of them cut the locks, someone's having their, on the diversion channel and was letting their staff park on top of the diversion. So all of this...
Cut the lock?
They cut the lock on the gates so that they could park on the diversion. Yep. And the light poles are extremely expensive. I believe they're how many? Two, $3,000 a piece?
Have we identified who hit them?
They're trying. They feel it has to be the contractor that was working in the area or their subcontractors, but again, so that just leaves us picking up the bill for that as well and any damage to the diversion or whatever. So it is a concern and that's why Dustin is working on it and trying to get the policies and procedures in place so we can hold the contractors and subcontractors accountable so our taxpayers don't have to bear the burden for all these broken down poles and wrecked curbs and so on and so forth. On a, on a better note, the tree lighting ceremony will be on the 5th from 5:00 to 7:00 out in the POW MIA Plaza. We're all really excited, it looks very pretty. Our street department did an amazing job working with West Fargo Events to get that up. I know the crews that helped, Mike Amundson even said he was very pleased with how, how easy they made it and how hard they worked and so I'm very proud of the work that they did. Next week, I believe, unless Dustin's changed his mind, he was going to give you an update on the changes to the Engineering Department and so that will be next week's meeting. Alley letters were sent out. We sent out approximately 325 letters to anyone that lived along an alley to just let them know that we would be, that with freeze-up, there will be no more maintenance, but snow removal will take place and that we'll be holding public meetings over the course of the winter to talk to them about moving forward on, on how to handle the alleys because they're, because they're taking so much time and money and energy, we've got to figure out what to do. One gentleman sent an email telling me that with the increase in his taxes, which would have been about $20, he felt we should be able to cement his driveway or his alley. So I think there's a misconception out there of costs and so on and so forth. And so I think we just need to work with the citizens and help them to understand and figure out where... where to go next. Dustin and Melissa have been working on an email and social media marketing over the next.
Yeah. I'm sorry, can we step back, just one second? Are you going to have meetings with the Commissioners as far as the alleys go, too? So, you know what? I guess, have we, we have many decisions on what we're going to do with the alleys, have we?
No, the alleys have to be approved by the people that live along the alleys if they want improvements.
Right, right.
All we're doing is meeting with them and finding out their expectations, so that we can bring something back to Commission.
Okay, okay.
Dustin and Melissa have been working on social media, marketing, and mailing to talk about the river in the upcoming winter. Because of the releases from Bald Hill Dam, there are additional concerns that there'll be layers of ice with maybe water in between them, and we want to warn the public to stay off of the river, whether it's for fishing, flooding, anything, just stay off the river. So, they're working on that, and they're also having their issues, letting them know that they'll be working on a spring plan, and letting people know and keeping them informed of what's going on as we move forward. Public Works Director, we will be doing interviews next Thursday. I just got done going through the applications today, so I haven't had time to even explain it to anybody, but we will do a process for this, for this, so that we can get a little bit more input. We'll start out with like a meet and greet at Public Works, so that the staff can get to see the candidates, talk to them, ask them questions, we'll do that for about an hour and a half, and then we will have a tour, and then we'll bring the person in for an interview. And so, that'll be, we'll get the schedule set, and the grouping set, and then we'll get a hold of the correct people and let you know, and if there's anybody else that we, that we did not contact at once being bald, you can let us know, but we haven't started that yet, as we just finalized it today. One question I have for you, eight oh one, ten and a half Avenue West is a property that was in the process of condemnation, that has now come back to the city, so we're the lucky owners, and I, it's condemned to the point it cannot be refurbished. Foundation's cracked, it's just, it's done, so it has to be torn down. Pierre and, was it Pierre and Nick, Nick Lee from Assessing, were talking the other day about, do we want to tear that down and sell the lot, or do we want to tear that down and use that lot possibly for Habitat for Humanity Home? I'm not asking for an answer today, but it's something that you could think about to see if, whatever, I'm not even sure if it's of interest to the Habitat for Humanity, but it's, I thought that Pierre Freeman and Nick Lee's idea was a really good one to consider for the Commission.
Could you give us that address one more time, please, Mrs. Fisk?
Eight oh one, ten and a half Avenue West.
Does that go back to the county first, right?
It already went to the county.
And then it's.
And they sold it to us for twenty-one dollars.
Okay, therefore, we're going all the specials or whatever was on it, so twenty-one dollars?
Twenty-one dollars, all ours? Yep. Other than that, I just wanted to make a comment, as we're nearing close to the end of the year, if you look at the comparisons of our building permit reports, we're up almost twenty million dollars over last year in building permits, whether they're commercial, residential, remodels, so on and so forth, so I think it's been a very busy year, and I think it will be another good one, because we have a lot of just foundation permits that are sitting out there right now for construction in spring, so. Do you have any questions for me?
One question, just protocol. The idea of poor streetlights being damaged is, I find extremely troubling. Have we engaged our police department to go out and interview these contractors, is to, is the police department involved?
They generally are. Anytime a streetlight is knocked down, Public Works generally will involve the police department, and the problem is, a lot of times, there's only so much you can do, but I can't vouch for sure. I was just told at the last Public Works meeting that I was at, that they've lost four streetlights just recently.
In Brooks Harbor?
I was told two were insured, and they're going to the insurance company, so.
Yeah, I didn't get the specifics, I just thought it was important for you to know that that's the reason why it's important for Dustin and staff to create those rules.
Mr. Scott? As Mr. Simmons was alluding to, the developer has stepped forward, I believe, and claimed responsibility for two of those lights, so they are going to be working with us to replace them. They've sent that information to their insurance company, the other two, again, yeah, we're, it's, we don't have evidence to accuse, if you will.
Thank you for sharing.
Just something in hindsight, thinking, when we talk about that, Dustin, and we talk about moving forward, I don't know so much that, you know, now we're pretty much done, but even next spring, I don't think you have to have a certain license or certificate to hire some college kids to go out there and take pictures, and, you know, not to snoop, but, so we have evidence of this kind of stuff. I don't think that would be that expensive to do that, as a beginning, a start to something.
Absolutely.
I don't know, but sir would know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk.
One other question, sir, when is the Christmas party again? You didn't mention that.
The Christmas party is this Friday.
Okay.
Good.
Don't tell him, don't tell him.
Okay, you know what, you just show up, and hopefully we'll.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to go somewhere else, right?
Yeah, we're having a, there's a social hour, and then there is a sit-down meal. Social hour starts at five thirty, and then the meal is at six thirty. Oh, that's right, I believe the meal is at six thirty. Amanda has taken control of the Christmas party and done a phenomenal job with the EEC, so they are going to rock it, but yes, it's a double treat.
And then the stocking program, how does that work again, please?
The sock program?
I'm kind of saying it's for everybody here, not just for me, but.
Perfect, so the sock program is, if you bring a pair of socks stuffed with whatever, it has to be a new pair of socks stuffed with whatever, I know, I know, right? Stuffed with anything, and I believe our limit is about ten dollars. If you bring a pair stuffed with whatever, then it's like, bring a pair, get a pair, so then you get one, and we'll have some drawings and door prizes and all those fun things.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisk, do you have any correspondence for us that we should be aware of? All right, thank you. Are there any non-agenda items that anybody from the public would like to address, or anybody, any of the staff? Do we have any students in the room that are here for a school project, or a scout project, or anything like that? Young man, would you mind stepping to the microphone and introducing yourself to us? This isn't a dad moment where I'm just trying to embarrass you, I'd just like to meet you. Speak into the microphone, please. Tell us your name.
I'm Tim, I'm here for my communications merit badge. Troop two-two-five.
What school do you go to?
I go to Carleton.
Very good. Well, we're happy that you're here this evening, good luck on your merit badges.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, Commissioners? It's your pleasure.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurnavich is right. Commissioner Olson was sleeping. Commissioner, we stand adjourned.
It is.
Nobody wants.